Okay, folks, the time that we have is around six o'clock. We normally start at that time. I have a little different meeting tonight than we normally do. We actually have a legislative public hearing tonight before our council meeting, and this is a legislative meeting that will be hosted by Mr. Trezkey Assis. He has some matters of discussion concerning the Harper Junction store and that property. The legislative act that may or may not happen would involve an annexation on that property. The reason for this public hearing could not just to hear the public sentiments, issues for and not for the annexation of the Harper Junction store. This is not the council's meeting. The council did not annex this property. This is a legislative consideration, which is another way of doing this. The city could not annex the property and did not annex the property and did not intend to annex the property. But there is two ways to do this. If you don't have contiguous boundaries, he could, the owner can petition the legislature to bring it in through a legislative act. And we'll talk about that more as the meeting goes forward. Got a lot of folks here tonight. We'd like to have a couple of people as spokespeople for the community, and then we'll hear from the business owner, and we'll hear from Tracy, of course, as he sees to conduct the meeting. Tracy, it's yours.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little bit surprised to be sitting at this table. I almost feel like I'm in a courtroom at a trial. I thought I was coming to observe tonight, and the mayor let me know that I was gonna be kinda hosting this event. So first of all, let me thank everybody for coming. This is exactly what I had hoped for, would be a room filled with interested parties. This process goes back, I'm gonna guess Vic connects for maybe nine, ten, eleven months, even while we were still on the campaign trail. He approached me and asked me if I would consider this, and he will tell you from the very beginning, I've expressed my concerns. The residents of the area around the store had made it very clear to me from the beginning that they were not interested in this action being taken. To be honest with you, I never thought it would get to this point, but I felt like once it did get to this point, I owed it to everyone involved to have exactly what we're having tonight, and that is a public hearing to hear those who are in favor and those who are opposed. I will take the blame for this. The mayor and I talked the other day, and I had misunderstood where some people stood on this particular issue. And our police chief is gonna come speak to us in just a moment. The police chief and I had discussed some of his concerns, and I don't wanna put words in Mr. Vickery's mouth. I know this is a public safety issue to him, and I think he has some very, very valid points there. At the same time, I just felt like it was in fairness to all involved that we have an opportunity to exchange ideas, voice concerns, any that might be in support thereof. The main thing I want people to realize tonight, this right here is what we call democracy, and I'm very grateful for that. People have a concern. This is what I love about our local communities. People show up, they have an interest, and they come share an opinion. We are certainly under no obligation to take this action. I have made no promises to take this action. And Vic and I have discussed this numerous times, that if my people, and I mean specifically in the area around the store, that's the ones to me that have the most reason to be concerned or in favor of, whatever the case may be. Because I know how I would feel if this were near my home. I would want to be consulted, and I would want to be allowed to have an opinion. I would want to be allowed to have a voice. So in simple terms, that's what we're doing here tonight. I want to make sure the residents and the immediate area, not that I'm not interested in the folks of South Hamilton or the folks out in the west or east of the town. This is a primary consideration for those who live between Hamilton and Hackenberg who have the greatest vested interest in this discussion. So to me, that's what this is for tonight. And with that said, I'd like for our police chief to come up and maybe share some of his comments that he and I have discussed before. Thank you.
Say it, we'll hear you.
All right. Thank you, Representative Assis, Mayor, City Council. I do have some concerns about this and opposition that come into the city limits. I have a small police department, a full team made police department, ten of which are patrol officers. Eight are on the street now, because I have two weeks that will begin back in July. We have the city limits here that is thirty-eight square miles. That looks like a whole one. Tuscaloosa's only thirty-six. Well, we're larger in area, in square miles than the city of Tuscaloosa is. And they have two hundred men, and I have a whole team total. So my concern is that. We try to do the best we can for all that inside the city, the city limits. We try to provide the best service we can for people inside the city limits. And I don't think it would be safe for us to take in something a mile of road that would move our jurisdiction three more mile up through, in radius surrounding the area. That three miles would put us right at Stewart's Body Shop. Now, the south region, all we do, almost, almost, and that's just north, south, four or three south, north and south. We have, we patrol two minutes a night. We average a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and forty miles per evening a night. And how, that area, if come into city limits, can be able to provide people the type of protection that we try to provide with eight thousand inside the city limits?
Yes, sir.
We'd have to have more officers. That's definitely my answer. I'd have to have three more, four more officers. Those cost, the whole time that y'all knows usually around about fifty thousand, your insurance retirement. So, with that being said, we should consider the vote.
Anybody got questions quickly for the chief that he might respond to while he's left voting? Our chief, you got all right? I think the next approach thing would be let Mr. Vic come up if he would, and before we get too far one-sided, let him offer a couple of comments to why he thinks this might be in our best interest.
Thank you, Mr. Assis. Thank you, Councilor. My police chief was saying, yes, it will extend it three more miles, but I'm already in police jurisdiction. I'm just a mile outside city limits. And I just found out, I'm gonna tell you, I'm already paying city taxes with my fuel. I kind of overpaid. Yeah, I kind of overpaid. I overpaid five thousand dollars. But like I said, all it's gonna do is, yes, I understand what he's saying. If you look at it that way, once we get into city limits, what we're gonna do is, right now we employ three people. That's all we can afford. We don't have enough business. We got everything around us is where, and we are the only dry place. And that store had been closed for five years. I go chance, I open the store, I would like to discharge a patient. Now, if we get into city limits, our business will at least go three times. Like, I would, yes, I have my vested interest in profit, but revenue wise, like, I don't know if I, we will be able to pay four, but at least we'll pay, at least we can pay more than two and a half salaries after the taxes we will pretend to the city's pocket.
You're projecting?
Yes, of course. See, now we only do four.
You're pretty ready to see the city? I thought you covered two officers.
Yeah, easily. Like, now we only do forty-five thousand gallons. Once we get into city limits, we'll go twenty-four hours, because I know there's nothing around me for six months. That's all. We make food, we cut pizzas and everything. We're trying to put in a, like, a laundry right next door. And like, we will, our sales, to be honest, will go from, we do about thirty thousand inside sales, would go at least a hundred, at least three times. That's nine percent. If you take sixty thousand up with nine percent, that's fifty-five, six thousand dollars extra just in sales taxes.
So now you realize the city does not get that four miles since they're state, county, and this.
City gets four percent. Not that we're not getting anything. That's like extra four thousand a month for the city, plus my fuel taxes, be about six, about six, seven thousand dollars just for the city. I pay, right now I'm in police jurisdiction, I pay one penny a gallon. Once I get into the city, it'll be two pennies. So, it'll be twice. We do about sixty, seventy thousand gallons a month. That'll be easy. We'll do the twenty-four hour store. We will put about seventy-two hundred thousand dollars into the city. We're active. Not considering what I gave you, we always have the school, the park department, everybody, like the park. People come to our store, we never charge them for coffee, we never charge them for fountain. Same with the police department. We don't charge them. Hey, this is the least we can do. This is only so far we can go with what we have. If you let us come in, and like I said, if we can give you back our ABC, like, record for last six years, we have never sold to any underage. We will get you that certificate. You can put in on contingent with us that we have never been fined by ABC in the last six or seven years. I've been, we've never been fined by ABC, never sat underage. Yes, like I said, and it will generate at least, with, now we have three people, then we'll have twelve people working round the clock, because we'll have a full-fledged kitchen, we'll employ nine or ten more people, elegant job around that place. But I will maneuver, I, all I do, the best way I feel is, it is a community store. I deserve it. It's not my store. It's the community store. They have authorized, like, I can see here in the morning, we charge them twenty cent, five cents for a coffee. We don't charge them for price. Just give us like, and to be honest, they'll fit three, four cups. It's fine with us. Like, we're fine. We do as much as we can.
Let me ask you this, and I don't, I don't speak for the residents, but I know having covered events such as this through the newspaper for twenty-six, twenty-seven years here, I would think that another concern for residents would be this land, while it's not currently contiguous to corporate limits of the city of Hamilton, if this action were taken, now we've got city limits sitting out there on that one. What's to prevent the other neighbors from tapping onto your property? And all of a sudden, city limits out in the country starts to grow, and I'm assuming several of these people live in that area because they don't wanna be part of this.
Yeah, so, nobody is, like, like you said, it's a democracy. Nobody's forcing anywhere to get into city limits.
I'm not saying we're forcing them to get in. I'm just saying there would be those near your property who have that right to exercise at that point, and that would still grow the corporate limits in an area where I don't think they would've wanted that to happen, I guess is what I'm asking.
There's always plus and minus. Whatever you wanna look at it. I'm looking at more taxes to the city, more employment for the people. That's all I'm looking. Yes, I'm not saying that there won't be some, like you said, you know, people will tap into this. I, I understand that. I understand that. That's why, like I said, when I first came to the city, the city was like, that's under toward. Then I look, I even gave them a, like, an actual sheet of how much we are expecting revenue-wise and everything. So, like, I'm, we're creating more jobs for people, like, around the people. I'm not gonna hire people from outside the city or anywhere. Like, most of mine, people who work there, I love, everybody wants a job. Like, that's like twelve, nine extra jobs for people. Like I said, we, like, and I, I don't say that right now, I'm supposed to get a refund check from the city for the extra money I've given them. I would, right now, you know, they said, put your money in the amount, this, whatever, I would write that check to the park department right there. I don't even want it. They can send it to the city, and like, they can send it to the district, they can send it back to the city, we'll give it to the park department. I've already done, like, any extra money, I can write it off in taxes and give it to, you know, the community. But I, like, I need some support from, like, I'll, I'll go around, like I said, you know, I, these two, couple of applications we were across the school, and if you let the council, there's glowing recommendations from principals and everybody. Like, they have given me glowing recommendations that always, sponsor, South Park, T. U., baseball, T. U. Spark, or like, I do everything around my store.
Just so everyone knows what those letters are, are letters that Vic has provided from neighbors to other stores that he currently operates.
Yeah, we have one in Corner, we have one in Oak Grove. That was my first store. They gave us, like, I, I sold that store. I went there after nine years, they still remembered me. They gave me that page where I sponsored the entire, you know, yearbook, and they gave me a recommendation. The store in Corner, the principal loved me. We, we did everything. We hired their account. We gave them food, like, we sponsored softball, baseball, then everybody came to us. We were right across the street from them, and we still admire them, because the principal recommended us. Technically, if you share a property line with a school or church, you cannot get it, but the school recommended us, and we got it. But like I said, I, if I'm, I'm willing to do for the community if you guys give me a license of all. Like I said, I would write, happily write that forty-five hundred dollar check right down to the park department. I would happily write it. I don't have a problem. I'll write that. Anything extra, and end of the year, I can, you know, give a school, give to the, I can give to somewhere and write it off in my taxes. That's what I did previously. That's why, you know, even after nine, ten years, people were still in habit, give me a recommendation.
Vic, you got any other points you'd like to make, or is there anyone else here to speak on your behalf, sir?
Oh, my employer. They have been with me forever, like, in this, I, I know I don't have a whole lot, like, but I said, I got whatever I could.
Any questions for Mr. Vic before we, let some on the other side of the topic speak?
Oh, I'd like to ask this question. Okay. Why do you want inside the city limits? Why?
So, the reason is obvious. I wanna sell alcohol. That's what the.
You don't sell alcohol at that location, is that?
Yes, sir. That will, that is what's gonna get us an extra traffic. We.
Okay. How many, how many seats are there in the restaurant?
It's like a full-fledged restaurant. We got like six booths. We, we created a whole, like, we built the whole restaurant in there. But we don't have enough for traffic, and then we don't have enough business to, you know, employ an extra person. Like, if you run a restaurant, you need at least one person cooking, two persons serving. We need more people. And I can't afford it with my little sales.
You think you're gonna sell enough alcohol to hire another person?
Oh, yes.
That's a lot of alcohol, first of all.
Oh, it does, sorry, it does. Like, I honestly, I've been in this.
Secondly, I think you're being a little bit optimistic about what an alcohol license will do for your store. You're gonna have the same number of cars passing every day, and the split, and when you split your alcohol sales between you and Tanta, that's not a whole lot.
So, the whole thing is like, the, I, this is how alcohol works. People who buy alcohol usually, like, will come on the weekend, I'll be honest with you. Weekday, you don't have so many. People who drink alcohol usually smoke a cigarette, nine percent. What happens is when people smoke a cigarette, now, since they are used to going to one store to buy alcohol, that's why they buy their cigarettes, that's why they buy their gas and their soda and everything. Now, if, if they have something that they don't have to drive all the way, Tanta will give you alcohol, it won't give you gas. You have to go down to Hamilton. So if I'm driving, I will go to a store where I can get everything. That's usually everybody does. And from where I'm sitting, I'm, I'll be the first store, you know, from a dry county, I would have a lot of traffic. Like, I've been in the business ten years.
That's not a selling point to me.
Well, let me add to it quick. We've got wet count, wet cities all around us. We go into Union, it's wet. Union, going Winfield, it's wet. They're running all around us. So, what I can understand about, instead of going the route you're going, why don't you put your efforts behind making the county wet, and that would include you.
I cannot get my store wet.
One question, second question then. What's gonna keep that, this like, if you get the alcohol license, what's gonna, what's gonna keep you from having a tavern that, building on? You just have a tavern like, those would you tie it on?
I'm sorry.
What's gonna keep you from doing that?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
If you got plans on building on and stuff like that, and there's a rumor going around that about something called talt beer they sell at stores. I'm sure you've heard of talt beer.
Yeah.
All right. What's gonna keep you from just putting a room up there, extra room on that building, and people just come in, drink their beer, eat their popcorn, get right back up, go out and get in the car? Do you, are you interested in public safety?
No, no, sir. I, I own three more stores. We, we run it in a way, like, we, I never, we never get an on, on-premise beer wagon. That is, I'm like, there's a certain way everybody just does it. I'm not, I'm not like a sports bar. That's not my business. And that's not what I.
It's gonna keep you from being, if you decide to be.
And that is not my business. It's, it's not worth it for me. It's not worth it for me. Let me predict to you that you, for a sports bar, it doesn't mean city. You have to have enough people. I'm in the middle of nowhere. Nobody, if somebody wants to have a good time to go to a sports bar, they can go to good, win places, and you know, the TVs all over. It should look like a sports bar. Would anybody come to a gas station to drink that beer? When was the last time you saw somebody go to a gas station to drink that beer? Nobody does that. I have no intention of doing that. It's, it's like, that's a bad business way to do business. Like, I'm in the middle of nowhere. Like, if I was in the city, that's different. So, everybody wants to come to city. You wanna have lights, you wanna have music, everything. I have no intention to do that. It's not, it's not worth it. That's, that's just gonna get me more risk. Like I said, people will drink, something happens, it's not worth it for me. That guy drank three, three cans of beer and he walked out of my store and he went and wrecked somebody. That's gonna jeopardize my entire business. It's not, it's, it's bad business policy. I'm not gonna do it. It's not worth it for me. Not worth it for me. And also, the way we have got the store situated is, the building on the side, it's the garage, is gonna be our, where we're gonna sell alcohol. The people who have been coming to the store, they will not sell alcohol inside the store. That's the way we have designed it. We don't intend to put the beer, it should get inside the store. It's gonna be on the other side. So, people who have been coming over there, you know, they can come with the children and everything, because to sell alcohol on the other side, you have, you have to be twenty-one or up, you know, to go on that side of the store. That's how we have it in Carpen Hill. We have a store, I don't know if you have, any of you have been to the Carpen Hill store. We have one, and we have a separate entrance that's where we sell alcohol and everything. So when we get traffic, the heavy traffic comes in with children and everything, they walk into us on this side of the store, there is no alcohol. They can run around the store, like, we're not wide awake and keep opening a cooler door and picking up the beer. No. We keep it separate. That's the way it is. And that's the way even ABC does it, that you cannot, if you wanna sell alcohol, you have to make sure it's in a separate portion, and we have enough. The garage next door, everybody who's, you know, has seen it, that's where we have to work. So the store side remains big, and like, people can come in. We have a restaurant in there. Also, we let people eat and everything. But we have no intention of selling on-premise beer. It's not, that's not part of the business.
Okay, Vic, if you would, I'm gonna let one of these folks come up. I'm sure we got one or two of you would like to say a couple things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, I wanna thank everybody in the shadow of the community for being here tonight, and I think if this had been midday, we'd have a lot more elderly people here, because a lot of people, you know, can't drive at night. And also, I think we should've had it up in a, maybe the old police department up there where they've been here, because a lot of people I talked to said, you know, ain't gonna be room, you know, and all that, so, but I do appreciate the ones that cheer. Listening to him, you know, everything sounds really good, but the ranking thing, I guess, for Alabama is drought, beer on tap, you know. And he may not, but his, whoever buys him out and moves on down the road, there'd be an ideal location with that city here for a restaurant, just house some beer right there on tap. The old building don't have any winters in it, so that'd work for good for a beer joint. And all y'all folks know that. And that's, you know, that's the main reason we're here, because we got, I mean, there's nothing wrong with Junior Mart. I had Bobby Bowden there to ask him why he wouldn't, that, you know, if he had, he shouldn't have never said to sell alcohol. If he just wanted Junior Mart or Country Store, it wouldn't be in the city limits. That'd made a difference. But I mean, he just outright said he wanna sell alcohol. Well, these folks right here lives in that neighborhood, and I do too. We don't want more alcohol. You got seventeen places you can buy it in Hamilton now, three restaurants. And I believe it's like, estimated, it's more than I thought it was. It's ten thousand, two hundred people lives in the city now. If you take thirty-four hundred meters, multiply times three, I believe that's the way you come up with a number, probably, of how many people lives here. That's a lot more than I thought it was. But that community up there is just not, it's just not ready for it. I mean, we, I'm, I'm already past fifty-year-old self, and got a lot of, yeah, Junior. We got a lot of people up there that's older. It's a real cell community, and I mean, we're just not interested in it at all. And, and also, if you got property up in that area, you know you don't want it, because it's gonna be valuable if you're inside of that thing. And I know he's probably got good ideals, but he's just one person plus the landowner and the leasing, or whatever the word is out of Vernon, just got the lease on the property. I mean, I can see how that'd make some money, but you cannot hurt this many people right here and many, many others just for three people to make a little money. And, and that's the reason we're here tonight. We don't want it whatsoever. Chief Police answered a lot of good questions. I didn't know Hamilton had thirty-eight square miles. I didn't know it had two hundred and fifty miles of roads and streets back at it. Boy, that's a lot of territory, and, and the best, you know, Chief doing the best he can, with fourteen officers, guaranteed. There's lots of them will grab the roads that don't see a police officer. Once did that, get them weak. And the sheriff department, you know, so big, you know, the county is, they can't cover it, so we sure don't need to go out in your further, you know. And, and the cost of, I, I, you know, I've been in the gas business myself a few years now, and that's some pretty big numbers up there that that store is supposed to be pumping out, you know. I didn't really have to see the caddy sheet to believe that myself, because, like I said, I've been in the gas business fifty years, and it takes a lot of gas to pump out seventy thousand gallons a month, I can tell you that.
And I got two of them coming. I was about to make them that, too. How are you? I live up there next to that store. They have got plastic garbage bags hanging up over their tobacco products. They can't sell tobacco products up there right now, and I. They have got plastic garbage bags hanging up over their tobacco products, they can't sell tobacco products up there right now, and I've been through there several times, no offense to none of the gas store owners, and they've been out of gas up there numerous times with their gas pumps covered, no gas. I mean, if he thinks he's gonna be bringing in income for the city of Hamilton, why doesn't he not sell his tobacco products? That's a big seller right now.
I have to tell you, the reason we're, we're not able to sell is, like, we were in the process of changing ownerships from Mr. Logan to us. So, in that meantime, we kind of like, our lease got like, in the way, and it was not continuous, and that's the reason we are not able to sell tobacco. If you have to have a lease, and right now they're in the process of selling, Mr. Logan just sold it to my partner, so like, we, we just bought the property. So, if, if you're in between, and Mr. Logan is like, no, I'm not gonna give the lease, you wanna buy, take it over, and then you can go get it. And to see, I, I answer her question to, when we lost our tobacco, we lost way too much business, we, we were doing about fifteen hundred of sales inside, we went to three hundred a day. And I can show you the figures, like, if he wants numbers, I will give you the numbers, that is how bad just a tobacco sale hit us. And that's the reason we couldn't even afford to get cash.
Let's move forward, we don't have enough time, we've got some elderly people here, don't cry about your daughter, okay? Uh, you know, the city would have to, uh, have to present a resolution to you asking for this to happen, and that resolution would, would have to have intention of health and goodwill. I don't see goodwill in Hamilton, I don't see goodwill in the Shadow Community, and, and, and another part of it have to be, uh, expedient to the economy, the chief's done, ain't you fat, you know, the economy ain't gonna gain a dag gum thing out of taking more property and more miles to run, uh, and, and, and speed it up. If he don't, someone will someday, if they have the old building, and this draft beer on tap is really gonna be a problem, because, uh, Mississippi's had it forever, and you know about those beer joints over there? When I was a small kid, I always heard about the pines, and then you, you seen that great movie, you know, Walking Tall? That's how I see that location right up there. It'd just be a deadly position, I mean, right in the center of our community there, and we do not want it. Uh, we intend to fight it as long as we can, but we do hope that this won't ever come up again. I mean, this has been dragging on, somebody said, a few months, this has been dragging on forty years. Uh, and, and we, we definitely don't want it, you know, so, let's please end this thing, I know it's out of y'all's hands, but let's just please end this thing and not let it come up and mourn our lifetime, okay?
Let me say this, I'm, I'm the one that made the statement about it being close to a year, because that's how long I've been involved in it when I was first approached. I know this body has dealt with it for quite a bit longer time than that, let me clarify something, and I hope nobody misunderstands this comment. To me, this is not an economic issue, it can be an economic issue, but for me, this is a public opinion issue. And that's the only reason I want to have this tonight, I felt like, you and I have had this conversation several times, and I've had it with a few other residents in that area. I primarily held this tonight to see if public sentiment had changed, has not changed. And that's all I wanted to hear, with all due respect to Vic, I just wanted to know, I'm here to serve the people of this community. And that's why I have every intention of doing it. I believe in public voice, I believe in people having the right to voice their opinion. Too many men and women have died for us to have that right. So, this was, tonight was a chance to exercise a little bit of democratic process. I just wanted folks to have a chance to, to voice an opinion, and see if that opinion had changed from what I heard when I knocked on doors a year ago. And it hasn't. It hasn't.
Thank you, thank y'all.
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you, Mr. Sessis, for being here. And I appreciate you making this a social issue rather than an economic issue, I think the economic question has been addressed, and it doesn't make sense for the city personally.
What is your name?
My, I'm sorry, my name is Paul Davis, and I have lived within a mile of that store for, or my family has, for over a hundred years. Uh, so, I have some vested interest in it, so I'm glad you're taking it as an opinion rather than looking at the economics, because I don't think the economics, I listen to his numbers, I don't think they make sense personally, I don't think you could project that much growth in that little store. I've known the owner of that store for, when he was under, two years, never generated that kind of income, and I don't think the legal license is gonna change that. So, thank you for being here, thank you, council, I appreciate your time.
I, I think one thing is very important, I know we've gotta hurry, Mayor, because you've got other business, you've got to conduct tonight, is, I promised everybody when I ran for office, I would be your voice. And that's what I'm trying to do tonight. Too many times, people get elected to go to Montgomery or Washington for vacation, they ride away with votes to get somewhere, then they wring their hands and think they accomplished what they wanted, they forget everybody that they asked to support them. That's not my intention at all. So, I had a very good understanding, I felt like, coming here tonight, what the opinion already was. And Vic will tell you, I, I've told him that several times, and I, I've been polite about it, we, I, I've shared with him numerous times in person and over the telephone. Uh, and I know he's worked hard, he, he's got out and got petitions signed and whatnot, uh, for those that have supported him. But if he'll be honest, he'll tell you, one day we were standing in the statehouse a few weeks ago, and he grabbed me by the elbow out of the crowd, and we ended up in a stairwell together talking, and he got to talking about how many, I won't mention that number, but he can share it to a lot, how many signatures he had, it was quite substantial, I told him, I said, I understand that. But the eighty to the hundred folks that live immediately around that store that expressed their concerns to me, their opinion carries more weight, because this is their home. And I know how I would feel if someone tried to come put something in my front or backyard that I did not want. So, with that said, I don't want you to lose your sleep over this, with all due respect to Vic, I, we can't do it. And it's just, uh, to me, to me, this is what it's about, and if, if the roles were reversed, I would say the same thing to Vic. I think he's trying to run a good business, and, and I commend him for doing that, I appreciate what money he's bringing into our community, for those we need it, don't we, Mayor?
We do.
Uh, the mayor and his council do a tremendous job providing services for our people here on a very limited budget. And while this mayor may not be an economic issue for us, it's like I said earlier, to me, it's more about home. And when people stand up, it makes me feel good, we see the world changing quite a bit, but it still makes me feel good to see this mean people stand up and say, this is my home, and I'm gonna protect my home. So, with that said, Mayor, unless you've got anything else, anyone else? Mayor, I guess it's your meeting. Thank you for coming, everybody.
I might say thank you.
Well, I want you to understand, this was the purpose of having this, this was not a predetermined decision that we were gonna do this, and, and Vic and I have talked about that, and I'm, I'm sure he's disappointed. But I told him that, I remember who sent me to Montgomery, and I will always remember who sent me to Montgomery, the day that ends, I will, I'll leave. But I just felt like it was important, and I know, I, I apologize to interview you that have lost sleep over that, that's not been my intention to cause you any restless nights. But I feel like this is the way elected officials stay in contact with those they represent and they serve, they have meetings. I won't get off into it, but I told the governor, she was sitting right here, and I'm about right here one day, the day before the gas tax vote, we won't get started on that, but I'll get shot before we leave. But I told her, I said, Madam Governor, I said, if you had given me two weeks to go home, I would have held some town hall meetings. And I would have met with my people, because they're my people, and I'm their voice. And I believe once folks are fully informed on the issues, they're grateful. And that's all this was for tonight, was to fully inform everybody of what was at stake here, and to give everybody an opportunity, who wanted to come, we had to go rounding up folks, put them, put the sheriff and the police chief out there, round them up, get his gun. But people are here by their free will to voice an opinion, and I, I truly appreciate your time, because I know it's very valuable. Thank you, everybody.
We want to thank you.
Yes, sir.
As many of you, as much as I can say, uh, I'll give it thirty people.
Still early, you gotta go in eight.
Yeah, she probably got this up.
Oh, no way.
You already...
I'm gonna sex you, you gonna sex the business man?
Yeah.
I am good.
Yeah, I've got a grass against...
Heck, you, well, I'm a lady.
We're gonna have to get that, get that truck out and dig out some ditches and...
You've got much of a grass, I know you're...
I'll pick it up, I'm riding my plane, in the water, you, you wanna take? You will be a pig, sir. You're a pig, sir.
They don't need anybody to look, take you to the man, do they? I know it.
Let me get over here to that, I'll see what's going on.
I'll sit over here where people start talking.
What? I set the point to a man just now, I don't think nobody cares. I'm...
We appreciate you.